He's ready. Five thirty, we're gonna stand for the pledge. Mike, hang on, sir. Mike from Moses is gonna lead us in the pledge.
I believe this is to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll call Craig Scott.
Here.
Mark Serbro.
President.
Ron Vaughn.
President.
Brad Newbaker.
President.
Jenny David. Here. Is there any additions or corrections to the agenda?
Like to discuss ORB.
Where would you like to put that, sir?
At the end of.
At the end of discussion items?
Yeah, H is fine.
O R.
Not much, just O R.
Anything else? No other additions or corrections? Item two, we got public comment. On December tenth, twenty twenty, the Board of Commissioners approved Resolution twenty dash seventy-seven to adopt rules of procedure that include a structure for public comment. Each meeting agenda includes two opportunities for public comment. The first public comment period is limited to topics that appear on the meeting agenda. A second public comment period is reserved for public statements on any matter or issue that is relevant or germane to county government. Persons who wish to address the board are required to comply with the following. One, state your name for the record. Two, speak only to the other person. Three, stand behind the podium when speaking. Four, limit comments to three minutes or fewer. And five, follow the direction of the chairperson when speaking. Board rules do not impose restrict restrictions on subject matter. However, failure to follow the direction of the chairperson will result in not being able to talk or be removed from the meeting. The board chairperson reserves the right to sound like Gavel when the audience applauds or drives a speaker. The board thanks you in advance for your compliance with these rules. Is there any public comment in the room? Any, any public comment on the phone? Public comment? Item three, we got appointments. There are none, correct?
Right, there are none.
Item four, we have discussion items. I'm gonna initiate this first. There was a spaghetti dinner, benefit dinner for Deb Mickle. Deb Mickle is a longtime member of our local community and an employee of the Aronak and County, Ogumah County Jail. Is battling breast and breast cancer and needs the support of our amazing community to help her through these tough times. Members of the West Branch Eagles and West Branch Moose Lodge are coming together to put on the benefits for Deb and would love your support as well. Donations are also welcome and can be dropped off at either location. This is Saturday, October second, twenty twenty-one, from two to seven, at the West Branch Eagles Club in West Branch, and the cost is seven dollars per plate. And if there's any request for further information, please contact Diane Keane at ninety-nine, two, four, zero, five, eight, six, zero. This is a, an amazing lady, so. Um, for A, we have Mesa health insurance proposals. Come on up, sir.
For introduction, this is Jim Baker. He's the field representative from Mesa. We've been engaged in conversation for about two months. About two months over health.
Pick the right one.
You sure? So what I've asked Jim to do is walk through the Mesa proposal with you. And when he's finished, I will talk to you about how this plan compares to other plans that we have available to us. And why I believe this is gonna be a very beneficial product, both for county as an organization, but particular for our employees. It ends up being a better product at less cost, which we're always trying to achieve.
Thank you, Tim. Thank you for having me tonight, folks. Again, Jim Baker, I'm the field rep for Mesa in this part of Michigan. I have Northern Michigan territory. Mesa is the Michigan Education Special Services Association. Little bit of background on it is Mesa originally started about seventy-five years ago. It came out of the teacher unions in Michigan. Michigan teachers were finding they couldn't get any solid insurance opportunity, and they decided to start their own insurance company based on what those needs were. We have well over a hundred and fifty thousand members, many, many school districts throughout the state. And approximately three and a half, four years ago, Mesa decided that they were going to start also working with municipalities in the areas of insurances. I've had the opportunity to meet with a few of your groups. I give Tim a lot of credit. He had put together an insurance committee that, that I took part in the other day. We had a very nice discussion. I, I would like to thank the two gentlemen and my right for being there. It's always, it's always helpful when they're able to ask any questions they may have. I promised everyone that I would keep this brief tonight. It was obvious through over the last few months that the county and the size of the employee groups that we were talking about, we really kind of honed in on two insurances. On the left side of that folder that I put in front of each of you are the plan, are the plan, overviews, the summaries, as well as a side-by-side comparison, including the pricing for a single two-person full family. I'd like you to know that Mesa only offers PPOs. As far as health plans, we don't do HMOs. So we are, we very much follow what will seem very familiar to many people in the room. We, we are underwritten by Blue Cross Blue Shield, one of two of our underwriters. We have a second underwriter because we feel we shouldn't always put all of our, all of our fruit in one basket. And so any, in the state of Michigan, any hospital, any doctor, any urgent care, any physician, any eye doctor, anyone that accepts Blue Cross Blue Shield will accept Mesa. Currently in the state of Michigan, hospitals, that's about ninety-nine percent. Doctors, it's somewhere about ninety-six, ninety-five percent, depending on, depending on who decides to join and be part of the Blue, Blue Cross Blue Shield network. These are extremely rich plans. The benefits, the highlights are these two pages, one in orange and one in green that are part of right behind on your left-hand side of that. The green plan that's there is called a Choices Plan, more of a traditional plan. You can see as I'm going down the left side, if you're looking on the right, it gives some of the characteristics, some of the highlights that follows the end network plans. We'd always, we always advise our members to stay in network whenever they can. Because the way that the pricing is set up in network is that anyone who accepts the Mesa insurance card, the Blue Cross Blue Shield underwriting, they are accepting and agreeing that they, that the member will pay the set-upon price for that service at that doctor. That is why we recommend the end, end network. A note on our coverage is that it, that includes in network, obviously in-state, across the United States and across the world. So if there are global doctors that, and physicians and healthcare that are part of the Blue Care Network in the world, it doesn't matter where your employees are, as long as they are in network, those are the same prices that they can expect. The Mesa Choices is what we call a low deductible plan. It's a five-hundred deductible for individuals and then the a thousand for the two-person full family. I, I'm not going to go through every aspect of it, only that the insurance committee that I was invited to talk to was able to, we talked for about an hour and a half. We were able to go through many scenarios, many questions in regards to coverage. Again, extremely deep, extremely rich. I think that the group was extremely satisfied after we were able to go through the overview and answer their questions. On this highlighted plan, the orange, is what is known as an HSA plan. And that, that is a health savings account, and it is literally that. It is a savings account. They have those in-network deductibles are what's set upon by the government. The lowest you can go is what I'm showing you. There are higher deductible HSAs, but this is a fourteen-hundred for a single person. Two-person and full families are twenty-eight hundred dollars. The strength of the HSA accounts is that by law, federal law, you are able to put X amount of dollars every year into that health savings account. You literally receive a health equity, looks like a debit card, that is our vendor for our HSAs. And then anywhere that you go for any of your supplies, your prescriptions, your, any of your aids, as long as they are acceptable within the criteria of the HSA, you can use your savings account. Those are pre-tax dollars that individuals or families can put in. And then you can use them as able within that criteria. The other strength of the PSA is that you can continue to put monies in for as long as you want and/or are able. You can adjust those monies. You can, once you are above fifty-five, as I am, you can then do the catch-up monies that they allow for both you and your spouse, if you're married. There's a lot of benefits to it. The beauty of the HSA is that once you turn sixty-five, there are no longer any criteria. You, that is your money forever. You have every ability then to use it for anything that you want. You wanna buy a new bass boat, you can buy a bass boat. If you're into other things, that's your money. And the strength is it went in pre-tax, you are not getting bipped at the end when you use it after sixty-five. When you are using it prior to that as a debit for anything that you need, it just comes straight out of there, just like a regular savings account. And then you're able to get those, you're able to get those accountabilities. Some of the, some of the strengths that are in both of these plans that are unique to Mesa. For example, if you look all the way at the bottom of the Choices Plan, the green sheet, we talked about this the other day, and there was a lot of interest in it, so I wanted to make sure we talked about it. It says osteopathic manipulations. So that is basically visits to a chiropractor. Mesa's plan is set up that you have thirty-eight visits per calendar year where you can go and you can receive that adjustment. If where you go for your chiropractic services also serves as a sports therapy, or they do the sports massage, if you end up being adjusted first and then while you are there, you go for your sports therapy, massage therapy, that counts as one of the thirty-eight. It's extremely, extremely rich. We have not seen any other plans that come close to that, to that benefit. Another benefit that's pretty unique to Mesa is that we have experienced members and that need hearing aids, and they need renewed hearing aids. I am.
I was shocked to see that, a hundred percent.
Well, it's after deductible.
Right.
And that, and that's up to, so right now, the, the benefit is it's thirty-eight hundred dollars for, you know, for two ear, you know, for two ears, but not everyone needs to. So it really breaks down to just under nineteen-hundred per ear, but that's every three years. So, so as that technology changes and updates, we feel that's extremely important. And so we have, we have received a lot of positive comments on that. Both of their, both of the prescription plans on, on both of these are, are very much what I feel the majority of the population is used to. Mesa, Mesa tries to keep people into generics as part, as much as possible. Then, of course, there's those higher generics that have a little bit more of a, a price tag on it. It goes from, you know, the two dollars, two or ten dollars. If it's a preferred brand drug, it goes up to twenty or forty. And then you can do the ninety-day supply if you would like to go ahead, if you need it, and you need to order that. I will tell you on a personal level, I was, the first eleven years of my life, I was a police fire in an EMT. And we had, we did not have Mesa, I'm sorry. We were on a different health carrier. I went into teaching and then into administration. Both my wife and I were, our educators were educators. We've retired from that. I came to work for Mesa. I've had Mesa for twenty-eight years. That includes three back surgeries, four knee surgeries. We have a daughter who's diabetic on the pump. We have another daughter who has Crohn's. And we have always found this, these coverages that literally when you meet your deductible and there are, there just simply are no surprises. Another key element to this is that if you look on the front where it says medical coinsurance, that is a zero percent. So there are no, there are no surprise, well, it wouldn't be a surprise if the plan was written at ten percent or twenty percent. But there are no surprises when you walk in. There is a zero coinsurance on it. And then it, both these plans, like all plans, have an annual out-of-pocket max. But that is what you would pay above and beyond once you hit your deductible in regards to what you pay for a online visit, an office visit, an urgent care visit, or a emergency room visit. I, I believe, I believe Tim is spot-on when, when you look at these and you look at the portability for your employees and where you'd like a progressive group to go. I know from personal experience and from, and from what, who we work with in municipalities that they're extremely happy with Mesa. I can guarantee you that when your, when your folks walk into any, any medical facility or anywhere where they're getting their prescriptions or their services, the Mesa card is well-recognized because of the educational community. And quite frankly, it's one of the easiest things your employees will have to do. It, it should be seamless for your group. So I promised ten minutes, and it was a sprint, but I think I did it. And I'm happy to answer any, any questions anyone may have.
Just to clear up, you, you spoke with the negotiating committee the other day. There is an insurance committee.
Oh, guys, yeah, I wasn't sure what it was being called. Yes, thank you.
I'd like to walk you through the first item on the, after the agenda on the that's breakdown of how the costs work with this. Pull those up. Black and white, so I'm gonna be mentioning the colors. On the spreadsheet, the first thing I want to point out is that the far right, we have two items that are titled, one of them is the BCN five-hundred fiscal year twenty-one. That's the current rates for the Blue Cross product that the non-union and elected officials have right now. Steelworkers Group have right now. Below that, you see the twenty-twenty-two hard cap rates, and both of these are gonna play into discussion here moving forward. Going back now to the top two rows, the top bunches, we talked the single two-person family. I'm giving you the monthly rate and the annual rate for each of the proposals, so you can see the Mesa plan, what those rates are immediately. We did get a quote from United Healthcare through Diebold, who currently is our agent of the Blue Cross. You can see what those rates are for very similar products. Their HSA is a fifteen-hundred rather than fourteen-hundred. It's a hundred-dollar difference on the deductible. The Blue Care Plan is the plan that was actually proposed for us to have for twenty-two moving forward. So it's a continuation of the plan we have right now. You can see those increases. They're about five-point-oh-five percent across the board, and they're a direct comparison to what Jim has presented with the Choices in the ABC Plan One. So you match the colors. They're, they're actually a direct correlation between the two, although I would submit that the Mesa plan is a bit better in terms of items that are, or the services that are allowed. Now, really importantly, let's jump down to the next group where it, under the title of Employee Contribution Rates for the Single Two-Person and Family. What we've done here is compared the rate for each of these plans to the hard cap. Right now, we do hard cap for employees for that PA one-fifty-two obligation that we have. And really how this works is the state is telling us, as a municipality, you may pay up to this hard cap number for health insurance, and anything beyond that is responsible, the responsibility of the employee to contribute to the plan. But you'll notice something in the Mesa plan that's very unique. For each of the plans, the single and the family in particular, all options are under the hard cap. Meaning in each of those cases, there wouldn't be, be any employee contribution at all to get the, the program. The two-person plan, under Choices, employees who would choose that would be responsible for seven dollars, eight cents per month, so roughly three dollars, fifty-four cents out of each paycheck to contribute to the plan for a total of eighty-four dollars and ninety-five cents a month. Compare that to where we are right now with the Blue Care Plan. As you can see, there'd be considerably more out-of-pocket. In fact, all of the other plans have out-of-pocket costs for the employee. So where we're standing right now, for instance, if you're a single, our Blue Care Network Plan right now would require that employee to contribute one-hundred-five dollars, sixty-six cents per month out of their check versus the Mesa Plan. It's actually thirty-nine dollars, seventy-eight cents under the hard cap, so the employee not having to contribute anything. And that works all the way through, then down to the family plan, under the Blue Care, five thousand, seven-hundred-ninety-five dollars coming out of your check every year versus the family plan under Mesa, actually eight hundred dollars under the hard cap, so no contribution necessary. Huge difference. This huge difference, not only to the budget for the county, but directly impacting the employee and the out-of-pocket costs that they have. I would like for the board to consider this as well. If you think the Mesa Plan is a direction that we'd like to go. Under the ABC Plan with the Health Savings Account option, you can see that that plan is actually less than the Choices Plan. So of all the plans, this is the one that's at least expensive for any of our offers that we have on the table. But I would note that under the ABC Plan, there is a fourteen-hundred dollar out-of-pocket deductible for the individual, twenty-eight hundred dollar out-of-pocket for a family, meaning you're paying the provider that, that amount. Once you reach that, everything is covered. Going with the HSA Plan, though, you can see that how far under the hard cap each of these plans happens to be. My suggestion would be for us to strongly consider making that contribution to the HSA account for the employee. So if I'm a single subscriber, one hundred dollars, seventy-eight cents a month to the HSA account for the employee, but noting the total cost, even by contributing that amount to the employee account, the total cost is less than what we're paying this year for a product that the employee is having to pay a hundred-five dollars out-of-pocket for. So even though we're paying or supplementing this to the employee, what sounds like an expense, it's still significantly lower in total than what we're paying right now for virtually the same product. And I take that a step further. Were we to cut over, obviously, the HSA would just start from zero and move up. It would be worth considering maybe front-loading half or even all of the first year's HSA match, so that the, so that the deductible amounts are already in place. So the employee doesn't have to worry about having a catastrophic event happen in January and suddenly being out-of-pocket. It would be taken care of upfront. The only risk to that is if we front-loaded it, if an employee left partway through the year, they're taking the HSA monies with them. But I think it's a relatively low risk, knowing what our turnover rate is. Another point to make in negotiations with our steelworkers contract that was ratified at the last meeting. The language for the healthcare coalition is in there. This is actually part of the meeting that we had last week is the concept in place. So we had everybody around the table. They could hear Jim. They can ask questions. Jim was kind enough to hand out his card with his phone number, so employees could call him directly with questions. And see, Missy's here tonight and can speak on behalf of the reaction from the Steelworkers Group when this was presented, which, you know, to steal your thunder, it was, sounds like it was fairly positive.
Yeah, I took it, texted the members and presented it, and they all, we did a roll call vote, and they all approved to move forward with Mesa.
And again, it's better product, less cost to the employee, and that's very good. And we have put this on the table with all of our bargaining units as well. I would strongly recommend that we move forward with the Mesa Plan. And Jim, you may want to talk about this. You know, we had the, the issue with our patrol deputies and our command officers and the cancellation of the Teamsters Insurance. Jim was able to take our plight to his superiors and work it through. They have a solution there, too, that would help those employees in particular immediately. I would suggest if we do this, that we would do a start date of November one. I know Jim's ready to go on October one, but I don't think we could get the rollout done very well in the two weeks remaining. This would give us six weeks to, hey, but our current carrier, I noticed that we would be leaving and then be, actually do the rollout. There would be new cards that would have to be developed. We want, want meetings with the employees so they can dive into the plans and determine which, which option they want to choose. We can get all those logistics out of the way in six weeks, a lot easier than we can in two. So that's why I would just suggest that. If you want to address the patrol officers and
Sure.
what you can do there.
Happy to. So the, the road and the command officers, as, as you are well aware, found themselves in a, a pretty precarious position, you know, based on, based on their de-affiliation from Teamsters. And then when they decided they were going over to the P O, P O L C. What, as an ex-police officer and, and our, my managers and, you know, the company are very serious about trying to get this municipality business because we believe we offer an excellent product. So we are able to retro back your road and your command officers to a July first effective date. So as Tim stated, it is, it is a lot of work to get any group to switch over. The November first deadline expectation effective date would be very doable. That, that's not an issue at all, but at the same time, you have command and road officers that, right now, my understanding is they're, they're waiting, you know, to, to get an insurance product. So we can retro them back, which would mean that as the processing is going on, that while they may have to spend some money out-of-pocket initially, we will then be reprocessing whatever the, those services are, those, those prescriptions, those, those doctor visits, ER visits, whatever it may be, back to July first. So we would just take that processes through. They would be ran as if they were members since July one, once they get their cards, once they get their accounts set up. And then they would be reimbursed those monies that they have already spent based on these criteria for these plans, whichever one of the two plans they choose. So their, their deductible, any money being spent would be working towards this current plan, even though they weren't with Mesa when it, when it occurred. So we, we thought that was important. The other, the other thing that I would like to point out is that when, when you look at these rates that we're discussing, these are rates that are effective until the end of twenty-twenty-two. These are extended rates. They can't, they will not go up in January one, like most of the rest of the state will experience. There's rate renewal. Mesa's rate renewals is every year from one-one of that year till twelve-thirty-one. But in this case, we, we asked for early and received extended rates from, from Mesa, which is, which is a very nice thing, and that's for all employees, not just for road and police. All employees, any, any insurance that, that they end up picking of the two choices, their rates will not change. It will remain the same through the end of twenty-two.
Jim, what's been your average rate change year-to-year for, say, the last five, ten years?
It's been about a three-point-nine right in there this year. The statewide average was a three-point-seven, which was three-point-seven, three-point-nine, but that's indirect. So the nice thing about that, for, for those that use the hard cap, is the hard cap also came in at a three-point-seven increase this year. So that statewide average of three-point, I think the statewide was three-point-nine versus, versus the hard cap increase was basically a wash, which is, which is a very good thing. Again, we are, we are very, very serious, obviously, about providing excellent healthcare for your employees, for your municipality employees, and I would not be working for the company if I didn't believe in it. And like I've said, I've used this front, back, in and out for the last twenty-eight years.
So with that explanation of where their increases have been, one of the here in the meeting was, well, you know, this is great this year, but next year the rates go up twenty percent. It's not likely to go up twenty percent, but we did the arithmetic on it. If it did go up to twenty percent, our cost is still lower than what we're paying this year. Not a, I'm not here to try to go up twenty percent.
No, it's while the other Well, the other, just to add for the group's knowledge, this area that I cover, in the Northern Michigan, Michigan Territory, the highest increase, the statewide average was a three point seven. The highest increase I, that we had, and it was in a, it was a school district that was out of formula, was a nine point, was a nine point one this year. But, but, you know, they, the year before, they had had about an eighteen. So they, they had some, they had some high usage and they had some catastrophics that they, that they had to deal with. Most of our school districts, um, because that's our biggest comparison pool, where, where actually be somewhere between about a zero point four. Um, up to, like I said, the nine point one. The average was the three point nine, so.
Tim, going back to that HSA, maybe uh, one component, I think, that needs to be, if we reload six months over a year, the employee is paying us back. Right? That payment back. We're, we're going to extend, extend that out, right?
We um, would wanna, wanna work that out. I'm not necessarily thinking that that's from an administrative perspective, a, a good way for us to spend our time. If, but that would reduce the risk for if, if we front load it and the employee left partway through the year. Clearly, the risk is gone because they're paying into it, um, or paying, repaying the county. I would suggest, uh, frankly, that going the halfway, the fifty percent on the front load.
Either way, but I mean, the, the, the component is that their, their initial payments, pay back, pay back to county for what we front loaded.
Right.
What, what do you need from us exactly?
Well, this is a, you know, the committee of the whole, so we discuss any, any questions that we would have. I would suggest that this be placed on the agenda next Thursday, uh, with a resolution to go forward with the Mesa Plan and, uh, HSA component that, that we've discussed. Uh, which again, would be an incentive for employees to even take the even lower cost uh, from the Choices Plan. And that we move forward with the intent to um, uh, make it all come together on November one.
So, just so I'm clear, so Mesa, I mean, obviously that's a no brainer here, but, the plans, we've got choices and we've got ABC Plan one. Now you want us to, am I not understanding this?
When I would ask is that you, you would, we would adopt a resolution that takes both the Choices and the ABC Plan one. Those are the offerings to the employees. So the employee chooses which plan, they, they would um, when, which, yeah. And then we would uh, obviously take care administratively of notifying the current carrier of what we're doing.
I did misunderstand. I thought now you wanted us to choose.
Oh, no, 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 no.
Both are because of your size.
Yeah.
Mesa, Mesa's uses size of population. Any one person, we do have, we do have some one person, small towns and municipalities, uh, and schools. One person to ten persons, there you can offer one plan. Mesa can offer one plan. Um, eleven persons to fifty, you can offer two. Fifty to a hundred, you can offer three, a hundred and above, we could actually do four plans. Um, when Tim and I met early and we started talking, um, before we knew that the rest of the county may be interested. You know, that, that's where we were. These are the same plans, to be quite honest, that we started with because they met the needs. My goal was to keep you under the hard cap with excellent insurance, with zero coinsurance. Um, and I'm thrilled that we're able to do that. And just to go back, that if, gosh forbid, you had a twenty two or a twenty percent increase. Truth be told, that if you're ever not satisfied with Mesa, we simply require a thirty day out. And you guys let us know. Um, I'm pretty comfortable in saying that, that's not going to happen. I think this can be a good partnership.
And um, I can bet you earlier, we are putting this plan in front of each of our bargaining units too. Our goal is to bring everybody in. And what Jim just said is exactly why. The more we get, the, the more participation we get, the more plans we can offer moving forward. This is an excellent start. Uh, but imagine if we had two other choices as, you know, to fit the need of, of the employee. I'm thrilled. I didn't think we'd be at this point for a few years yet for the counties. This is uh, you know, really uh, very positive, I think, from where I sit.
Well, as it's explained to us, I mean, it's a benefit to county, that's for sure. But it's, it, if you look at that comparison chart, it's a huge benefit to the employee.
It's a win-win for both sides. No offense, what's about it? I mean, it's, like Jenny said, it's a no brainer, you know, as far as I'm concerned.
You're looking at,
I, I, I guess.
Yeah, you're looking at a couple of these plans, uh, the, the family is putting out four thousand dollars a year and under current. Zero, oh. Zero coming out of your paycheck.
That's major.
Well, and the benefits of these, I'm hearing these alone is astronomical and they're very rarely covered.
Yeah, it's, they're, and they're, uh, you know, like I said, we have in-depth, I mean, books, so we can cover just about every situation, but, you know, as long, I, I explained to the group, for example, bariatric, you know, if that is something that your doctor is recommending and you've met your deductible, you are, you are getting bariatric at zero out of pocket. You know, it's, it's just, it, it goes on and on. Now, don't get me, there are out of pocket maxes. You know, but again, that criteria, very few people ever get to an out of pocket max. Unless, gosh forbid, you're, you're on one of those, one of those tough, you know, drugs that are catastrophic. But even then, the out of pocket is extremely reasonable and very few people ever, ever get to a thank goodness.
Even if you got to the out of pocket, that's equal to the coinsurance that they're paying now. So, you know, they're not paying coinsurance and if they did get to the max, they'd pay the same amount of money. And so this, next year would be the same amount. Only if you went to the max, would be the same amount you just paid out last year.
Well, let's put this on for a resolution. Obviously, I think we've agreed, correct commissioners, employees are happy.
Well, we already voted on it.
Okay, so.
Yeah, this is all based on the hard cap.
Okay, just making sure.
Yeah. I'll make sure to write that into the resolution, so you can see it.
So we need that writing.
Yep.
Okay.
Anything else, guys? Thank you, sir.
Absolutely. Nice meeting you all. Thank you.
Have a good night, everybody.
You too.
Item for the Board of Canvassers appointments.
Turn this over to Brett.
So, as the county election coordinator, um, every election, we have the Board of Canvassers that come in after the election to certify our election. We have two people that their term expires October thirty first of twenty twenty one, and then one person who resigns. So we need to fill three spots. One Democrat and two Republicans. The Democratic Party Chair sent the nomination of, uh, Patricia Van Houston, who she currently is on the board. She would like to continue serving. Um, so I just need you guys to approve the Democratic one of Patricia and then pick two. Out of the Republicans. That's your,
Oh.
Board of Commissioners responsibility to pick.
The ones that we see the applications for, two out of the, we need to pick two of those three.
Yeah.
Do all three, uh, are, all three are interested, definitely?
All three are interested. Um, I don't know any of them personally. Dwight told me that all of them would be fine.
So you have no preference?
I have no preference.
So can you tell me exactly what they, what they do again?
Yeah, so after the elections, um, are you familiar with what happens at the townships on election night? They bring in a packet.
A boat.
Okay. So that's the start of it.
Okay.
So there, people from the township, after everybody's voted, they get all of their paperwork tallied, put it in a packet. There is a packet for the Board of Canvassers and a packet for the county clerk. They bring it in. We basically confirm everything is accurate. Um, everybody, the um, absentee voters are, everybody's accounted for, numbers match up. Then usually two to three days after the election, um, the Board of Canvassers come in, we have a meeting. And basically double check everything on the election, every single township. We open up the packets, the clerk packet, the canvasser packet, everything's compared. Make sure it matches, make sure what was transmitted into the us at night matches what's on the papers. It just basically is our county checks and balances of the election.
Okay.
And then, in, in addition to that, in the event of a recount,
Yep.
The canvassers are pretty much the referee. I had a recount done under election. I had the canvassers are right there. They, they make sure that, the number of ballots uh, uh, are the same count as in the voting book. They make sure that the ballots come, uh, that are delivered to the, because they don't come to the courthouse. From the townships at, on election night. Ballots stay.
The recounts?
The ballots stay in the,
Actual ballots.
For, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, you're talking.
But if there is a recount, they come to the county building and they have to come here in a proper manner. Uh, sealed in a proper container and everything. And the canvassers have to, have to okay all that.
They open up.
Believe it or not, in my case,
Everyone.
Two of my townships were, were um,
Recounts?
Only two out of the four was recounting. Two of them didn't follow the rules. And the canvassers voted not to, not to count those ballots because they were not packaged right, or they were not sealed right.
Ooh.
Oh, yeah.
Yes.
I'm telling you.
They're kind of a big deal in terms of,
They just, they're the check and balance, make sure everything is, all the rules are followed.
Do they get paid for this?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Yep, they get the um, pretty, um, like you guys, the mileage and all that.
Typically, they're, they're just needed around election time.
Yes, whenever there's an election, um, or a recount. Um, we're having a November election, so whoever is selected will, they get to jump right in, start in November.
So we have, are you gonna list the names?
Um, because you can't pronounce them? Cause I can't. All I, all I can pronounce is Christine Troyer.
Okay, I got it.
This young lady right here.
You're Christine? Okay, nice to meet you.
Same here.
Um, John Robashad. I've heard of his name. That's the extent of what I know of him. Um, and then Maria Kiranen.
Okay, um. Ma'am, can you, do you, would you like to speak to us? Do you have anything to add to your application?
Um, if you, if you look at my application, um, I'm very well qualified. I was previously a township clerk for Gutter Township. I've been very involved in community. I love to serve the community. Um, I had to resign as clerk because of my health. I've had seven heart attacks, okay? But I'm a survivor. My health has improved over the last three or four years. And uh, I would like to become re-involved again in something, anything, but I can't work full time. I just, I'm not that well off. So, um, physically. So this is something that I can do, that I would love to do. And um, if you had the time to, to read, it's basically the information I took off of my resume.
I gotta say, I love reading your application. Made me chuckle. Oh, in a good way.
Yeah, one and a couple of things that I said. Um, I know that you're all human. We all are. And uh, anyway, that's me. That's my personality. And yeah, I have no fear of anything. Nobody intimidates me or scares me. Uh, so when it comes time to do the right thing, no problem. I don't know what else I can say, but that's, I'm just one of those people.
Um, the other, John didn't really put any information on there.
I see that the other one is a, is a certified election chairperson.
Has.
So she's got, and I, the,
Yeah.
Those are the two I'm leaning towards.
I don't know any of them personally.
I don't know any of them, but.
Personally.
How, how did you get to uh, her? How did they apply for this? I mean, was there, was it posting or?
Uh, the party chair is the person who nominates them. So Dwight reached out to the Republican Party. Asked if anybody was interested and these three, there was another one that was interested too, but he didn't get his application in on time. Um, so that's how they were selected. It's the party chair who nominates. So ultimately, it's up to Dwight McIntyre for Republican and Ken Kish for Democrats.
Anything else, Dad?
So you gotta vote two out of three, so.
What two do you pick, Ron?
I'm, I'm good with the, the two ladies.
Commissioner Rundubeker?
Well, I'm definitely good with her. Um, I just, seems like a pretty important uh, thing for us to vote on. Would have been nice for the uh, other person to show up.
Did you know, ma'am, that we were gonna be discussing this tonight?
Yeah, we all received the same email, uh, telling us that it was on the agenda for tonight.
When did you receive that email?
Uh, I think it was sent the eighth.
So you had adequate time to come?
I'm not sure. Yeah, it said Sunday thirty, tonight.
Three emails.
I think it was, from my memory, I'm thinking it was, you sent the thing out, it was the eighth, right?
Yeah, um.
Three each, or you sent?
No, three times.
Oh, that's what I, three times to each individual with a notice.
You know what? I've got it right.
Mine is her because I got hers early. Um.
Well, Johnny, if you wanna make a decision.
I don't, we're discussing right at this moment.
Okay.
I don't need.
Final reminder, September thirteenth, Monday at four forty-three, Brett Gildner sent to Marie, John, I don't know who this person is. And to myself. We all received the same thing, talking about coming tonight if you want to.
Okay.
October thirty first is when these terms expire. So, we,
And the terms are for how long?
Four years.
Wow.
But you got one resignation, correct? Even though the term, so he is open?
Correct. But we don't have an election until,
So if we were to see, fill in the vacancy on that.
Yeah, so we, oh, this is the second. We don't have another committee of the whole to discuss it before it, oh no, we do, cause we're in September. Yeah, yeah, you can put it on another one if you want, and I can reach out to them again, to these two.
Commissioner Serebik, do you have an opinion?
Just by looking at, at the applications, the two ladies, I mean, obviously she's qualified, you know, and is certified election. I, I don't see anything from the gentleman in regards to the fact he's a member of the Oklahoma County Republican Party and, and I don't see any qualifications equal to or over and above the other two, so that's why I'm moving toward.
Well, I definitely agree with you on Christine, but Marie, um, Kiranen, or however you pronounce it. Um, where, where is she from? I mean, I, I see she's got a current address as West Bench now, but uh, there's not a whole lot of work history there. It's just um, where she went to school and with the Red Cross Academy.
Right.
I mean, where was she a certified, certified election worker? Um,
Does that matter? I, I mean.
I just wanna know more about them, that's all.
I can definitely, reach out to them and tell them both that you guys would like them in person to ask, questions, because I do agree. I think it is a pretty, I mean, for our county, I mean, the, the election is extremely important and, the canvassers are insanely important. I mean, you know how important they are from the last election. Yeah, so.
Commissioner Scott?
Well, I mean, it's, um, I'm like, Um, I'm like. Mirroring Mark, I mean, if I'm just reading this now, Christine, I know Christine personally.
Friendly competitors.
Yeah, well, we worked together and we worked against each other. If you look at a resume, you'll see. The ways, ways the services in there. But anyway, uh either way. You know, I, it's possible I can know everybody here, but the thing is, is when you uh. When you just got that, I, I, I wish we would have been a little more prepared for this uh. I, I just um meet everybody that's on the list, you know? My question to you was, did you wanna make that decision now and adopt it in a week?
I think right now we're discussing what we wanted to do, so, I mean, it's just, just a discussion at this point in time, and I wanted everybody's opinion to figure out what we wanted to.
Well, I know, firstly, I have been. Involved with Gitter Canvassers because of a recount, so it is important. And watching, watching what happened during that recount and. Having two of my townships discounted because of irregularities. And this, and voting is, is probably the, the best, the, the uh. Most sacred thing in, in our democracy, I'd sure like to see our elections go. Proper.
So as long as you guys are okay, let's uh, let's reach out to the other two.
I think that'd be fantastic.
For the next committee of the whole, and see if they're willing and able to come in and, and do the same thing that uh, as Lady did, so I appreciate your time.
No problem.
That's all.
And you were a competitor, so I, I know I liked you.
No, I.
Sometimes I be him, sometimes he be me, but we always shook hands.
You said you were intimidated, so. Okay, thank you, we got that, then you're gonna put that on for the. Uh, next committee of the whole?
Right.
Yeah, you good with that, Brett? Yes, Maria actually was um. Traveling today. So that's why she wasn't here.
So she did respond?
She, well, when she sent this in, she just said, I'm on my way back from, it was out west.
Okay, perfect.
Can you tell me what the next uh committee of the whole meeting date is?
Seven, October seventh.
October seventh.
Yep, nine AM.
Nine AM. Okay.
If you can't make it, it's all right.
We already.
We've already asked.
We have your application, ma'am, and you already spoke to us, so I, I think, I mean, it's not necessary unless you want to.
And knowing a little bit more about who I might be working with in the future as well, so.
But thank you. We are gonna go on to item C, RV park infrastructure bids.
You know, last year, we, we, we started this process, and I speak because uh, I'm a Parks and Rec. We're gonna have to, we're gonna have to rebid and, and narrow our focus down some. We just wanted to bring it to the, to the board now. So that, because, because winter's coming soon, we'd like to get this project off the ground. We didn't wanna wait until we got the bids, then wait for a committee as a whole, then wait for a, a meeting. We thought we'd bring it to you now, that we're gonna bid this out again. Be prepared for us to come back with some bids. Okay, now we've approved it last year and everything like that, but you know, to re-approve it, it'd be another formality. Just. We, Ron and I wanted to bring it to the rest of the board, so you're aware that we're rebidding this. And uh it's, it's okay with the DNR, the passport grant is still alive and well. It's just that the costs that we got in the beginning were way higher than we ever expected.
Since people are listening and not sure exactly what you. Can you go into just a little bit of detail?
This is uh the sewer infrastructure into the RV and the park and the camp, the secret campground.
I think, I think what this does, Jenny, is it, it breaks it down where we kind of bid everything altogether. Last year, where this is gonna break it down, where this is just the sewers in the uh. The other sites, the ADA sites, and that can be done in the spring, and if we keep it under a dollar amount, we can do it locally. We don't have to have the. I guess we'll still bid it out, but we can bid it out.
Yeah, we can, we can, we can, the local contractors, because of the scope, would be smaller in some of the projects. One of the big, one of the big selling points. To the DNR for the grant was that we could provide some ADA. Uh compliant sites. Uh with some paving and concrete and wider spots and stuff like that, that gave us big points. In winning the, winning the, the grant. And at first, we included all the whole project into one big bid. It came in much higher, so we're gonna have to narrow it down, we're going after the sewer. Infrastructure. Is, we don't have sewer sites now, we have a collection tank. We wanna put them at the sites. And uh so we're narrowing that down, and then we'll piece out the smaller, the smaller uh project. And maybe get even uh better pricing through smaller contractors. Cuz.
So I'm probably off here, but isn't that Mr. Uh, uh. What's his name, Rich? When he was here, here a few months back.
He's a member on the committee.
Isn't, is this similar to what you're discussing?
Yeah, it's similar, he's, yes, he's a member on the committee and he was, he brought up some of the points. Yeah. The way we, we, the way we first structured it, the whole, the whole project would go under one umbrella, one bidder. And then that bidder may. May sub out certain things. Well, because the price tag was way too, way higher, probably twice what we expected. We're gonna narrow down and bid out just the infrastructure, sewer infrastructure. And, and because. By doing the whole thing, the, uh, uh, say a small um. Concrete contractor here in the county could not take on the small thing, the whole thing. He, he couldn't, he, they couldn't put in the sewer, everything else, because that would be past their realm. But if we narrow it down to just the sewer being one project, then the big companies can go after that, then we can look at. Uh bidding out the smaller projects individually and getting. The smaller guy do it, like the, the concrete to the concrete guy.
Come back to us with these bids.
Right.
In what period of time?
Probably in the next month.
And will any of this be covered by grants?
Yes, well, we have an eighty thousand dollar.
Okay.
DNR grant, and we have a promise from the West Ranch Township DDA of a hundred thousand dollars. So up until now, we've not asked the county for anything. Now, in the meantime, we've got some of this uh American Rescue money, we're not sure if we can use this yet. Or not, but um. We just wanna head off a, a committee as a whole meeting.
Right.
We get this together, we can come to the regular board meeting and, and come up for a, an acceptance vote. Since the, the commissioners have to.
What timeframe are you looking at?
Well, within, probably within a month.
So let's put on this, will you have the bids available for us to discuss at the next committee of the whole?
We're trying to take the date.
No, won't, because they won't be due till after the first committee of the whole meeting. But they will be here before the next regular meeting, so if we talk about tonight, then we'd be ready to go. I'm ready to bring it to you for a vote. On uh, on the first. First. Regular meeting night.
So, but I guess here's my question, if, if you come to us with the bids of just the sewer, I mean, that's obviously not going to be all the monies that's gonna be needed, there's a lot of components to this, like you just said.
Could be.
So if we approve the sewer. For whatever amount. Not knowing how much the rest of it, I know nothing.
Reason we have to vote on it is because the county, the Parks and Rec Board doesn't. The Parks and Rec Committee doesn't receive the money coming in, the county receives the money coming in. So because the county receives the money, then the five of us have to vote on it.
I thought we already voted on this.
We did, as a whole package. We wanna just, we don't wanna get, we don't wanna get into next month, have some bids, and then all of a sudden, oh, well, wait a minute. But no, let's talk about this again.
But I thought we were just approving the funds to be. Transferred to that.
Right, right. Well, if we don't. I'm not even absolutely sure we have to even.
For those funds to go through.
We did, we did, and maybe we don't have to do it again, but we thought we'd bring it to the committees all this one. Talk about it, if we have to vote on it. Then we're trying to head off, we're trying to shorten the time, that's all.
Yeah, see, the sewer work we want done, the park closes October thirty-first. We want the sewer work done ASAP after that. The other stuff won't even come into play until next spring.
Tim, do you have any input?
No, I think it's good that the uh proposal was brought forward for the conversation, but I appreciate the. You know, seasons, we're running out of time to be able to do this, I think it's good to expedite.
Well, Tim, like Brad said, was that vote before good enough to go on and bring bids to us now?
I, I'd say just because of the time that's. That we've had since that discussion, I think these numbers are gonna come back way different, I don't know if it'll be high or low, but it needs to be way different, simply because we're, you're.
Yeah, further into the uh process, yeah, yeah.
Well, this wasn't a problem with, with. Us having to vote on it again, to my knowledge, it was because the bids came back too high.
Yeah.
And we didn't have enough money to cover it. So if we rebid it and we get under that amount, then I don't see how we need to revote on it again.
Well, it's a different. It's, it's a separate process, I understand what you're saying, you're getting to the same goal. But it's a, it's like those didn't happen, or even if you had awarded last time. This is like now a different project because of the time it slapses, a different fiscal year that we're gonna be talking about as well, so it's, it's best just to. Start it over again.
Why do we have to, you're saying crunch time, why does it have to be done right now, what's the, what's the urgency with?
Frozen ground.
Frozen.
I understand that.
The sewer line in the front of the property is, the sewer line comes out of the city and the townships and everything else. That sewer line's about thirty feet in the ground.
Okay.
So you will have to trench out from the sites, then down to the sewer. So this all, this all is weather related.
Correct.
And we, the later we go, the more expensive the project's gonna be.
But is my, my question, I, I understand all of that, my question is, why does this project have to be done? What, what's the urgency of now versus next year, what? What does that money have to be spent by? With, from the grant?
I, I don't know what the sunset is, it, it, it could probably go into next year, the thing is, you wanna be able to open the park on time.
Okay, that's what I'm.
Yeah, well, that's. It's. Get it done before winter. But before May first. When we open the park back up.
Yeah, I think there is, I think the grant does end next March thirty-first, I believe. Mr. Bell said, but he could file for an extension.
Yeah.
So we hate to not spend eighty thousand dollars from this, this grant that we have. Well, doing the sewer, will that make it so then people can do a um. I'm not a camper, so I don't, the, the yearly, the all-winter, can they camp there in the winter? Would that be winter season, I know season, all that summer.
We have seasonal sites already, we have seasonal sites already.
Right.
The, the, I guess the bottom line is. Our park does not offer the amenities that other parks do. Uh, we turn people away because we don't have on-site or on-lot sewer. This park was built back in the day when a twenty-four foot camper was the biggest one on the market.
Okay.
Most people came in a little teardrop camper or a pop-up. And, and have them water and an electric plug at the site was good enough. That was really top-notch, that was better than pulling into a campground, didn't have anything. Nowadays, twenty-four foot is the small one. Forty foot's the big one. And, and uh, and with sometimes with trailer and truck, forty foot's even short. But the thing is, the, the unit itself, a forty footer pulls in, they want. Uh, they need a high average.
It makes sense, I just didn't know if it'd make it.
Right there.
As far as year-round, was my question.
It won't, it's not year-round, but more accessible. For the season we have.
Okay.
But we, we do have, what, ten seasonals? Seasonal people?
Think there's twenty right now. I believe there's twenty.
Twenty right now, yeah, we have twenty that stayed the whole season.
I've never been back, I've never been in there.
I mean, we call it the secret campground, and it's a secret, because here you are, you've been in town how many times, and you don't even know it's there.
You can just pull in and drive around.
Yeah.
Nobody will know the difference.
Perfect, okay, so you'll bring, you'll bring these bids to us, that's where we're at.
Absolutely, because we, we have to, as commissioners, we have to locate the expenditure.
Thank you. Did you have something?
No, 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 I, but go visit, if you got the time, and you're going out to business.
I will do it.
You're going out to loop to go to Walmart or whatever. Take a little tour.
Okay, lease agreement.
I just, we um. Made the effort to with uh Kelly over the lease agreement that we discussed at the last meeting, but we just couldn't get our calendars to match. And I are gonna probably have that early next week, still an infirm date from her, but.
I was gonna say, did you, still haven't? Looking either Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, I believe.
Right.
Tim, I did speak with uh the Equalization Director regarding. Mr. Wehan had mentioned about. Because she's gonna be using it for commercials, that it would need to be on the tax roll, that it would have to be a building on leased land. Um, and the assessor for the city would need to be involved in that. I don't know, you know, if you need to be part of that conversation before you.
Yeah, and then those are the things we need to talk to her about, but the, the, the end of the day, I think um, from our respect. We would put into the lease agreement that that's gonna be her responsibility to follow through on that. Um, and on the other question that we had on lot nine, I think it is with the small building on it, and there was a question about uh. If um she and uh Kevin Elliott were to, to purchase that, could it be split? Um, that's another city question, and frankly, it, for, for us, um, I'm not sure, we wanna be a part of that conversation. That wouldn't necessarily involve us. If it's purchased from us, it's gonna be incumbent on them to do whatever they need to do with the city do, if it gets split, I, I, I don't really know what their plans are.
Be split before it's purchased.
No, it will.
So is that size of lot able to be split?
That's something that the city would have to do through their land division.
So would we be better off, Denise, selling it if we're, if we're going to, if we decide to sell it, to sell it to one?
I would put the split cost on them, because there will be costs involved. It may be concerning to accomplish this split. So I would put all the costs on them if you do go that way.
Definitely, yeah, so any, any cost there is, our. Our uh part of the transaction is simply to receive the check, and after that, it's, it'll be on them.
It, it will then become an unbuiltable lot, because the size of the lot will be too small to build anything on. And they'll just attach it for tax purposes to the adjoining lots, but there will be something on there that will make it non-buildable.
Is the size, so if it was sold as one parcel. Is it that size buildable, or are you saying it's non-buildable if it's split in two?
Typically, if it's split. You'd have to talk to Equalization, but you can divide property without going through land division, and that makes that property unbuildable. If you split it, then it can be sold separately, but because of the size of the lot, I'm not sure that you would be able to sell it and build something on it. Because I don't think it'd meet the criteria. But if it's a joint to the other property, then they could use it.
Right. That was my question, somebody asked me, um, they must have been listening in on the meeting as far as if, if we're gonna be selling property, but putting it out to bid. So I, I would guess, are we gonna discuss this now, I don't think, are we gonna put it on the next meeting?
Because we're in the meeting, I think putting it on next meeting of the whole is probably just, just fine, um, yeah, that. We, we've made absolutely no commitment to anybody at this point, so it's still a concept.
Uh Brett and I did make a trip over there and looked at the building, agreed that this building definitely needs to come down, um, and, and they. And, and they came to us previous, uh, so I, I don't want, I, I wanna continue this conversation, I don't want this getting. Postponed, so can we put this on the next, because you guys are meeting with her just related to the lease agreement, correct? Not about the.
We will, we're gonna meet with Kevin and her in regards to the. That as well at some point in time, but what we're trying to disconnect to her with right now is always the lease agreement.
Okay, that was my question. So you will report now, let's put this lease agreement on the next committee of the whole two, I don't think it's right if you guys meet Monday or Tuesday, us to have to make a decision. Board meeting.
I agree.
Item E, COVID prep preparedness plan.
I just wanted to put this on the agenda, so let the board know that we are monitoring what the president announced last week about, uh. Potentially mandating vaccinations for employers of greater than a hundred people, which we wouldn't fall into. Um, details obviously are sketchy at this point, I understand that it probably is gonna be at least ninety days before OSHA. Uh, works through the rules process in, in Washington and gets those rules passed. Michigan is not under the federal OSHA, we have our own state, my OSHA, that would be in charge of enforcing. It's not clear right now whether or not. A ruling out of Washington would impact my OSHA, and if it did, how that would be impl- implemented as well. So at this point, we're just taking the advice of Michigan Association of Counties and doing a wait and see. Uh, so I understand that the way the announcement came down is our employees went under that plan, have two options, either A, get vaccinated, or B. Get tested once a week. Uh, testing, you know, also the president said, uh, he had some kind of an agreement with. Large retailers, he mentioned Walmart, to, um, sell the COVID test kits, test kits at cost. Uh, I don't know how much those cost, but a question that came to mind, and I asked Greg Mead about is if. This was an expense, is this an expense that gets passed on to the employee, do we eat it, how does that work? My question was pretty simple, is this a cost that we could pass on to the employee, he provided a one-word response, no. Okay, solve that problem, so, um, if this became an issue, um, that we have to deal with. Got a couple of steps we need to go through versus identifying all of our employees who are vaccinated. Probably end up getting a copy of their vaccination record, dropping it in a non-foilable file. Uh, and keep it with the personnel files in the clerk's office, and that would allow us then by process of elimination to determine who's not vaccinated. And then likely lean on the department heads to make sure those tests occur every Monday or Wednesday or whatever the. Uh, uh, schedule might be, and that we maintain a record of that as well, if it gets into that my OSHA. World, that means, uh, we would be subject to audit at any time from my OSHA, we'd wanna look at our records. We'd wanna make sure that we're right on top of it, just like we did with, uh, check-in forms last year, uh, you know, we were able to. Uh, maintain those in an automated way. So that, that's where it is, and we're monitoring it, I again, don't think, um, anything is imminent, uh, but, you know, I don't know how these things work, that could change. At any time. I expect there'll be other challenges to it as well, so it's, could well be beyond even ninety days before we know the answer.
Anything to add, commissioners?
No.
In a mass courthouse and grounds procurement car limit.
Chris Casey came to me, uh, last week, uh, he's, uh, constantly coming up against the thousand dollar limit on the procurement card. For building and grounds purchases, and he asked if you would consider a resolution that would up the cap on that card to twenty-five hundred dollars.
What does he?
Well, supplies, uh, um.
Most recently, a repair from Honeywell.
Yeah, that, that was, had to deal with our air handler here, a couple of you, we had negotiations on the day it was out. Uh, and that, that we actually, uh, thought we were gonna have to use two different cards. To get the part in here, to get, get the air handler operating again, but I think he's doing more of his purchases for, um. You know, just the supplies that we have, it's, it's a very convenient way to just get online, order it, have it delivered, uh, and just.
Well, that's been a big hangup for me ever since I. Lot of our supplies out of town, and these supplies. And I've done the cost, I've done the cost analysis, we can buy this stuff locally cheaper. And we're not, and, uh, this was brought up to him in my first term, and. And one, one particular item, he just told his supplier that he can buy it cheaper, and the commissioners want him to, so they matched the price. The bottom line is, our vendor here in town was not getting the purchase, even at the same price. They, they were not making the sale. These people are taxpayers and they're voters, they deserve, if they're, they're so, they sharpen their pencil. To sell us the product as cheap as anybody else, then we should be buying from them.
I, I guess, I guess I'm oblivious to this supplies, are we talking about cleaning supplies, or what does Chris order?
Be able to tell you directly, I'm, I'm going off the top of my head.
Well, next month, they will have a morning meeting while he's here.
But you've, you've got, you've got the toilet paper, the, all the cleaning supplies. Yeah, you've got, you know, the paper towels, um. Right, there's, yeah, for.
I don't know that he's not buying it locally, for that matter, um. Well.
Mostly, you go over claims, but most of, I mean, he does buy some stuff from. I know there was Ace Hardware on there for, I'm sure, you know, fixing this or that, but I think most of the, um, the paper goods are. Um, out of county purchases, I'm trying to remember.
Well, I can tell you, in my first term, it was, and I know it sounds menial, but it's toilet paper, and. Up the central, I asked Gary Clacking about it, he said, we, we ask her to sharpen her pencil. She was selling it to us for thirty-five dollars and ninety-six cents a case, and he was buying it down at Saginaw for thirty-nine dollars a case. And I said, well, right there, we could save four dollars here. Right here down the street, and she's paying taxes and paying his wages.
Obviously, there's some questions, could, so can you ask Chris to come to the next meeting?
So you tell departments, this is exactly the reason why you need to be here with your own issue, rather than depending on me to explain it, because I.
We'll put him on the next.
Yeah, the thing is, is, is these cards, I think, are becoming a, 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 a method. For departments to go online and buy stuff from out of town, and we're not even checking with in-county vendors.
I guess, let's start with Chris, and then as this communication continues, then we will continue to bring people in, if you have more questions, and we can approach them and ask them, and.
Okay.
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 Sounds good, Chris is gonna be here next, next meeting. Uh, let's do the ORV ordinance before the, are you okay with that? That way our lasting is, that way, that, that way our lasting is the budget, so what did you wanna add?
The ORV ordinance was brought up by, uh, some, uh, residents, uh, and business people here. Uh, a few months ago, and I know we've gotten cluttered with a lot of other, more important stuff. But we, we pulled up, we pulled up our ordinance, which hasn't even been messed with for over ten years. I think, uh, I think we need to, because the townships are involved. The, the ordinance, they are involved, it is not just a county, uh, thing, I think we. Should craft a letter to the county, to the townships, and ask them for their input on if they'd like to see a change in the ordinance. If, uh, the big, the big thing that was brought up was the time limit. Uh, in, in our ordinance, it says that. ATV or, or RVs cannot be operated on, on a county road, um. Uh, after, a half an hour after sunset. Yet, you know. Or these have progressed quite a bit in the last ten years, and people are using them all over the place. And, and I'm talking about the people that legally use them, but they're going past. They're going later into the night.
I, I thought we already had agreed with this, and that was a plan, but Tim just hasn't gotten to that part of communicating with the townships, am I?
Okay.
Not understanding, isn't that where we left that?
Yeah.
Well, I'd just like it to bring it back up.
Yep, agreed.
And let's get something going to the townships, and let them have the input, because the way it's been communicated to me by. These one township is that it is the commissioner's ordinance. Well, there's more to it than that, when you look at it, look at it, I think it's time to revisit it, get their input. If they got certain roads they don't want RVs on, then tell us, you know.
I've brought that up to both of my townships, since, since we talked about it three, four months ago, I said, we want your input, you know.
Right, I did mine as well, I let them know that they could receive, you know.
But I told, and I, I was at Clacking last night, and I told the same thing, I said, we're still, you know, I said, it's gonna come out, I said, but just, you know. If there's issues, you know, write them down, let me know, so.
Well, I gotta think Breck's probably got a, an email list to every clerk in the.
I do.
You can probably hit one button, and every clerk gets a letter, right?
So how about we continue, uh, I, Tim's been asked about this, and again, he's been very busy with negotiations, budget, and.
There's a lot of, been a lot, a lot of other things too.
Let's put this on for the next meeting, that way it doesn't get forgotten.
Uh, next regular meeting, or?
No.
All right.
Would you like me to send an email? We have to put a letter together, correct?
Okay, we're gonna let them know what we want, so.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, so, are we good?
Okay.
Next is a budget.
Okay. You may have heard me talk about this a little bit ahead of the meeting, uh, we finally found a little bit of a glitch or flaw with the BSNA software, and that is. I can't, um, easily print the budget in a format that fits on a single screen. And, uh, actually, when I'm. Transfer the data out of, uh, BSNA to Excel, uh, I can't even manipulate the spreadsheets very well, so. I worked on that over the weekend, so Monday you'll have a readable copy of everything, uh, that you have, but I did send the one, uh, Excel sheet to you. Um, that's, you can probably access on the iPads, although the iPad isn't very, shall we say, easy to use. Uh, even with some of the least I parked into it, so we've got that. The budget, though, that, that you've seen, we've been through now the entire general fund and all the special funds, so they're all entered into the system. Just wanna walk you through what you're gonna see as you, uh, uh, get into the budget itself, and then talk about. Particularly the special funds in relation to the millages that are connected to them, there's some opportunity there for you to consider, uh, what. Uh, rates you wanna put, uh, or approve as far as the millages are concerned. Looking back through my notes, so I did notice last year, we did not have on the. Millages that we, uh, passed the EMS village, and as I recall, there was a conversation, uh, last year that, uh. Conclusion was, we didn't have to, I've revisited that, I'm not so sure that's the right answer, so you might see the EMS village on the. Resolution as well, because you have to set the millages, uh, and appreciate that it goes to EMS, but you're the only body that can do that.
I've met with EMS today, just before this meeting, and the village, they had the form that they need to get to Randy. And we voted on it, so I don't know, um.
Would you have to do that with nine-one-one also?
If they have a village, yes.
They do.
That's, I'm, I'm pretty confident, I've been actually following some controversies in other counties, um, and very similar type situations, where there's a. A village that ends up going to an agency that's outside of the Board of Commissioners. And the legal opinions have been very consistent, is the board sets those millages, and, and then makes. Makes determinations, you know, others, other things that you can, so anyway, one of the, uh, things that you asked me to do was look at some of these millages, and then. Um, you know, look at particularly at fund balances, and can, uh, millages be reduced? Um, I'll say this just because we don't have any EMS budget in here, I did look at their, uh, annual audit, and the answer is they need the village. So it, it should not be reduced.
We just passed the EMS budget today too, and they definitely need it.
That's, yeah, so, um, that, that for sure, not, another one, the Commission on Aging. Uh, there's an annual village collective there, I do know, um, they have had some struggles over the last year with COVID. And, and their programs as well, so I don't think this would be a good time, uh, to make a reduction there either. Uh, and frankly, my experience with Commission on Agings is that they tend to use all those funds every year, so it's, uh, that. That's something that's, uh, being banked, the others I'll, I'll talk about as we go through their, the budget. So the general operating, I'm not suggesting any production there, uh, did wanna point out a couple of things, though, as we. Get into that conversation, uh, earlier this year, we passed a resolution that would establish, um, some. Uh, establishes our fund balance and, um, reserve fund. And we've also wanted to make it, our goal is to wean ourselves off from the delinquent tax revolving fund as, uh. You know, consistent source of revenue coming into the budget. And you might recall from our conversation with the auditors at the beginning of the year, their conclusion was that the county could feasibly transfer three hundred sixty-six thousand dollars. Each year, and not reduce the overall financial position of the delinquent tax fund, and that's all well and good, that's the foundation I'm using. Even though the last couple of years, we'd actually taken down more than that, more than the three sixty-six, and that, I think, is why the auditors brought it up. The general fund budget that I'm gonna propose to you reduces that amount by twenty-five percent. My theory being, we wanna wean ourselves over a four-year period, so this year's the fiscal year twenty-twenty-two budget would call for a transfer of two seventy-four, five hundred. From the delinquent tax fund, uh, into the budget. Another thing that works into the revenue side, uh, is the ARPA program, the ARPA, uh, that's the, um, um. Federal money that we received, uh, two million dollars earlier this year, and will receive another two million next year. Part of that program included a formula to calculate what we call lost revenue, so what was. Uh, on the table in Washington is that Bill was being, uh, discussed, was that while the local governments have. Fully been impacted by COVID, and we're gonna set forward a formula to, we could all use to calculate. What that lost revenue number would be, and lost revenue, we're eligible to, uh, take from the ARPA funds. For the current fiscal year for twenty-one, as well as twenty-two, twenty-three, and twenty-four, so over a four-year period. We did the calculations, uh, and actually had to check with, uh, the meaner experienced firm that did our internal control audit, uh, checked it for accuracy. And the response, uh, that the formula gave us, and it's arithmetic, right, so it's not subject to guessing anywhere. Formula actually said that all of the ARPA money could be applied to lost revenue for the county. All four million dollars of it, I'm proposing in this budget that we use five hundred thousand for the twenty-two budget. We'll talk about a budget amendment for the twenty-one budget later in October, as the final numbers are, are rolled in. Uh, but for twenty-two, uh, using that lost revenue, and going through the revenues, you'll actually see in some of the lines that there is a reduction. On, on several of them, the reduction is not as bad as it is for this year, uh, because we actually geared ourselves back up, so things like our. Um, contracts that we have for, uh, counties that house our inmates in our jail, for instance, and you're seeing that recover. But there was definitely an impact on the current year and the past year, uh, on that, so it's, uh, you know, certainly the arithmetic works out for us there. Uh, three items in the general fund that, uh, I, I wanna call out because they are changed, the first on the correctional facility. We received that report from the Department of Corrections earlier year in the year, the report that said we needed to add two correction officers. Uh, in order to be compliant with what the state wants to see, this budget does include those. Uh, two new full-time equivalent positions, but does reduce the part-time and the overtime lines. Uh, it's not a one-to-one match, but, uh, clearly, if we have the two positions, the need for overtime should go down. And a number of our part-timers were being used to fill in some slots that perhaps won't be necessary. But doesn't, hopefully, doesn't impact the transport, because we'll still need to do that, uh, at a hundred percent moving forward. Second item under animal control, uh, we currently have our animal control officer working twenty hours a week. This budget will propose to increase that to twenty-five hours per week, and this will help with the workload that, uh, they're experiencing in terms of that. Uh, animal control component, and then lastly, on the fleet insurance, uh, last meeting. You probably remember passing that, uh, uh, resolution that dealt with all of our risk control. Uh, and all of our liability insurances, and our fleet coverage is included in there. I don't know how the fleet insurance was divided among the departments in the past, and I, I couldn't come up with, uh. Rationale that I could, uh, duplicate, so what I did was take what we, uh, had to supply for the fleet coverage to begin with. I had to list all the vehicles, and we had to reduce the replacement value for those vehicles. And my arithmetic is very simple, I divided the total fleet policy into the value of each vehicle. In departments like building department, that's a substantial reduction in their budget. In departments like building department, that's a substantial reduction in their budget. They were being charged a little more than three thousand dollars on fleet for their share of the fleet policy. And in fact, it was Brian Stein who brought this to my attention. By the time we went through that exercise. That amount is being reduced by about half for the building department. I think it's an equitable. Division of what that cost is, and it's certainly something I think that can be defended if any department were to challenge it. By and large, most departments saw a reduction. It did impact transit the most. But then those buses cost the most too. So it's. Worked out from, at least from a logic standpoint. So with that, the budget then is in fact balanced. There's a small surplus. We will revisit the surplus issue once we have a closer to final numbers on the current fiscal year. We, I believe, will finish with a surplus in this year as well. And then once said, those numbers, once we're comfortable with what they are, we're gonna revisit the reserves issue and begin building those reserves. As we discussed earlier in the year. And my calculations, if everything goes according to plan, and of course, nothing ever does. But if the current trends continue the way they are, by the end of the four-year period, by the time the ARPA monies are expended. We will be in a position that we won't, not only won't need the ARPA dollars anymore, but we'll also be completely weaned off from the delinquent tax monies as well. And that's, then becomes an exercise of monitoring delinquent tax, because you don't necessarily want that to build too much either. But then we have the luxury of being able to establish a policy that says if we're gonna use delinquent tax monies, we use it for one-time purchases. We don't use it for ongoing services that are gonna continue to cost us year to year. So that will dovetail into our reserves discussion and capital improvements and everything else. But that's the trajectory that we would be on, starting with this year. That will of course take discipline on all of our parts moving forward, but I'm confident that we can, we can all manage that. Now I wanna hit the special funds, and this is, will be a new document that you'll receive probably some point over the weekend. The first item, in fact, the first couple of these are pretty brief. The first one, we have a special fund for the Sheriff Canine Unit, and these are dollars that are generally donations that are received. They're kept in the special fund and then used to offset the canine, even though the fund balance is ninety seven percent. You know, thirty four hundred dollars, it's not a huge amount. So really nothing more to get into with that. Friend of the Court currently would not have a fund balance. We do through the general fund, make an allocation to the friend of the court each year. So really a fund balance in that fund wouldn't really be necessary, as we are already dealing with it. Couple of, well, one fund in particular, that's a bit of a mystery to me, is the Marriage Counseling Fund. That has a two thousand eight hundred percent fund balance in it right now, forty two thousand dollars. Not sure what the rules are for this. I'm sure there's a statute someplace that says these monies can be spent for this. So that's, I'll find who the budget administrator is for this. It's either the clerk or the friend of the court. Okay, so you're off the hook.
That's fantastic.
I'll get with the friend of the court and talk about this. This may be monies that could be used to offset maybe some other friend of court expense. Not sure, but we wanna make sure we're compliant with whatever statute it's time to. Building Department is a fund that we set up for the first time this fiscal year. So what you see in here, the projected surplus at the end of twenty one of a hundred twenty thousand dollars is reflective of how busy they've been over there with permits. These revenues are permanent base, so part of the fee schedule that we do each year. Includes what it costs for a building permit and electrical permit and so on. We are bound by something called the bolt rule on this, and that's to say we aren't supposed to be making revenue. The permit is supposed to cover the cost of sending the inspector out to do the work. I do know that Brian has suggested that the vehicle that they have at the building department is in need of serious attention. If not traded in and taken off to somebody else. So we may be revisiting that fund balance in the near future for that capital expense. Next item is Registered Needs Automation Fund. Those funds are locked by statute in terms of what they can be spent on. It's been managed very well over the years. Does have a sixty four thousand dollar fund balance, but I know you have things in the works. Software is always updated, so that money will be spent accordingly. Now, the Road Patrol Millage Fund, we've got an interesting dilemma here. The current, about the budget that you'll see for the Road Patrol Fund for next year, beginning on October one. Is just over eight hundred one thousand dollars. But as you can see, that the, in the other sheet, the Road Patrol Millage this coming year will likely bring in nine hundred seventeen thousand dollars. Now that being said, the current year, by the time we are finished settling out. What, what's a road patrol cost and what isn't? Conservatively, and I'm saying guessing low, that fund's gonna have at least a three hundred fifty thousand dollar fund balance in it. At the end of this year. Eight hundred one thousand budgeted for next year assumes what I just call a best-case scenario, that as of October one, we will be fully staffed up. We will have night patrol and everything will be working. Well, we all know that's not going to happen. Now, it's necessary to do this so that we can track from year to year what our. Expenses are for things like wages and for the equipment and so forth. Answers are pretty darn good though. We're not gonna be a hundred percent staffed until the earliest of be January. And I'm not confident we could even meet a goal like that. So in all likelihood, we're gonna see additional surplus, if you will, next year as well on top of this. Right now, at the end of the fiscal year twenty two with that eight hundred one thousand dollar budget. Conservatively, there would be about four hundred sixty five thousand dollar fund balance in that fund. All this comes down to is to say I would be very comfortable from a budgeting perspective if that village were reduced by half. So rather than collecting the full mill next year, reducing it to a half mill. That gives us the cushion in case something glorious does happen and we do get a lot of candidates and we are up and running by November. There'll certainly be enough funding there to, to take care of that. But it's just to be a very comfortable thing, and I think something that you can take back to your constituents and saying, look, we are monitoring this. We do realize we weren't able to staff up this year. We can't do refunds, but we can reduce the village for the coming year. This would be an opportunity to do that. Community Correction Funds, four thousand dollars in it. Next one, the CPL, just a licensing fund that has. Pretty, right now, in the fund balance of forty five thousand nine eleven at the end of the past fiscal year. Looking at expenses and revenues this year, you know, projection at the end of next year, that could be sixty eight thousand. Those monies again are tied to a statute in terms of what it can be spent for. That right now that falls, I believe, that, Brett, you're still doing that in the clerk's office. So that would be worth looking at to see how those funds can be spent. Again, it's just, I don't think a good practice, particularly in government. To allow these fund balances to continue to build if those monies can be allocated to something else. This is a case where we may not be able to, but it's, it's worth revisiting just to check it out. Another one I wanted to bring out is the Local Corrections Officers Training Fund. This is tied to a statute that was passed a few years ago that says these monies, they, they're. Passed through fees that are charged at the jail and other sources, but have to be dedicated strictly to training our corrections officers. And right now, we have a fund balance in there, thirty five thousand seven hundred dollars. The corrections budget for the coming year has a line item of two thousand dollars in it for training. I wanna check with Brian just to make sure I understand what that two thousand is being used for. That may come out of the general fund and we just simply would rely on this. Thirty five thousand is telling me there's ample funding there to train the officers that we have. We have an obligation to get them fully trained over a two-year period. This fund has been built. Is it one?
One.
Okay, so.
Data hire, they've got a year to get through the corrections.
Well, it looks like we have to hire two more, correct?
We have to hire two more, but you know, they'd only budgeted two thousand even in the general fund to train. I don't know how much training costs, but I know they've, they, it's.
It's a lot more than that, trust me. Yeah. So I don't know if they've been using. I don't know.
Well, I'll, I'll talk to Brian and we'll, we'll figure that out. But if we're not using it correctly, we'll make sure that we are. And that could potentially provide a little bit of relief to the general fund. Drug forfeiture fund is, you know, like thirty five hundred dollars. Those funds used to be a lot more lucrative. But I think some of the rules have changed in terms of how forfeitures are. Dealt with through the courts, so thirty five hundred dollars sitting there. Our library fund doesn't have a fund balance. We wouldn't want it to. Indigent Defense Fund, remember from our last meeting that we just passed the approval of the grant for indigent defense for next year. We had a fund balance of a hundred eighty one thousand already. Projection is that after twenty two, can we balance our budget for the best or worst-case scenario? How we wanna phrase that. So we budgeted our attorneys and everything that goes with that at the. Maximum workload amount. All of this money has to be contained within that fund, so there's no relief to the general fund at all. But this is one that you do want to have some fund balance in there, because if there were a, a year where the workload was such. That they had to bring in another attorney and they had to bring in expert witnesses and so on, the funds are there to take care of. And we don't have to rely then on the general fund to offset any of those costs. The next one, the MSU Extension Fund is actually has a millage tied to it as well, point one four six five mil. The funds for next year. Current year, we had a fund balance of fifty one thousand four eighty one in there. We did this year for twenty twenty two, ended the secretary position in there. And we will end up using fifteen thousand two hundred of that fund balance. This for the coming fiscal year. And that's something at this point, I don't recommend we reduce the village, because I think you're gonna see that village gradually being spent down over the next few years. For the programs that are being handled at, at extension. And actually, I'm pretty excited for this department. I think there's a bit of a. I don't know what the word is for necessarily a push, but I think we've got some momentum going right now that we haven't had in the past. I'm particularly excited about your for each fees being waived, which I think.
Those have been waived. Those were waived last year as well. So.
Yeah, they were waived last year because of, of the pandemic and the recognition that in-person programming wasn't gonna be available. And in consideration of that, sort of understanding how that worked for families and youth. And, and a real hard look at what we were collecting and, and what it cost us in terms of. Access to kids who don't have that twenty dollars, the decision was made to eliminate it completely and not bring it back. So it will not return. That, that fee is gone forever. So, um, yeah, I, I just appreciate learning about the balance. I, I haven't been the director very long. I never got a statement or any kind of. Understanding of where I was in terms of the balance, and I will admit, I didn't ask. So this is an area where I'm growing and I appreciate learning about it and, and I'll do my best to, to keep up with it. And then I addressed, sorry, I feel awkward. I don't need to be weird about this. I addressed the board at the last meeting and just shared that we've, we've had some expenses that we're processing. And we're, we're just working our way through getting those done, but there's sort of a, there's a set of dominoes that have to fall for some of those expenses. For example, to get the copier, we, we were working through getting that approved. And then the copier that we had chosen moved out of the MyDeal program, so we're identifying a new piece of equipment. And that's a weird sort of just point-in-time delay of availability. And then there's some other cost centers with our employee and, and there's some things that we're changing over to accommodate her better. And in the process of that, some of those were waiting to do until the remodeling is done in the building. So there's a whole like series of, once the remodeling is done, then we'll have a computer available for her that's on the county server. And so we'll spend dollars for that, but we're not gonna do that until the remodeling gets done, because new, new lines are gonna be run. It's, I don't mean to make excuses, but I appreciate that and I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Well, you know, I don't, I don't think the dollar amount here is, is. Gonna make that big a difference, not in this fiscal year. I, I don't, I don't see where we're making any change here to one point, point one four. Millage, you know.
I would like you to finish going through these and then can we talk about these individually?
Hopefully we're.
No, no, no. Yeah, I'm gonna let them go through the rest of these and then.
Hopefully, post-COVID, they'll get back in the swing of things and.
Tim.
Next one is the Childcare Fund, and of all the funds, this is the one that, if anything, gonna keep me up at night, this is the one that'll do it. This could be very volatile. We've been fortunate over the last year that it hasn't been volatile. Current year fund balance is only nine thousand one hundred twenty seven dollars. This is, could easily be, well, it might be about a half a million dollar fund by the time it's all said and done. At the end of this fiscal year, there is gonna be some surplus, because there were some things that happened at the state level in terms of their accounting. And we've got a new accounting formula that was able to return extra dollars to the counties this year. So right now, I'm projecting at the end of this year, fun balance of a hundred seventy five thousand. I'm not projecting any use of fund balance, but I'm also not projecting any additional fund balance at the end of twenty two. But I'll say that with the asterisk. I think there will be, I think Michael LaFave is very on top of this and is. Once we also get the day treatment center open, I think it's gonna have a very positive impact on this fund. That would be a twenty one point six percent fund balance. I would not be unhappy to see a fifty percent fund balance there just for the cushion in case we have an incident where we need to house additional juveniles. The Veterans Office Fund, current fund balance at the end of twenty twenty was two hundred fifty two thousand. The overall budget for next year for the Veterans Office is a hundred seven thousand eight thirty. So this is one at least for the millage, the point. One, two, five, zero millage. That's one that if you were of a mind to, that you could just simply not assess next year and you would still be okay. Still be able to run that office at full strength.
That was the soldiers sailors. One point, the point one two five.
Yeah, soldiers and sailors.
Because you got the point four. And you've got one that's. Point four millage for veterans. Isn't that the regular one?
Yeah, it's down.
And we're not listing soldiers and sailors, sailors and soldiers.
We call them both. We call one a veterans and we call the others the act two fourteen veterans, which is just tying it to a statute.
There is only two for veterans, isn't there? Millages. So the point one two would be the soldiers, sailor, soldiers.
The, the one that he just mentioned, the number was it two fourteen?
Yep.
Yeah, that's.
The soldiers and sailors millage that came after. We already had the.
It's a large, it is a larger, no.
No, it's not.
But the two fourteen fund is a point four of a mil. That generates three hundred sixty six. That's the main millage.
For the office separation.
Right. So then the soldier sailors is the point one two five.
Just the, just listed as the veterans, not the act two and fourteen. Okay.
That only brings on a hundred fourteen.
Next one is the County Park Fund, and that's the RV Park and the Deer Park. It does have, it did have a year-end fund balance at the end of twenty twenty of just over fifty thousand dollars. These are pretty self-sustaining funds, just in terms of what's brought in. Do project additional surplus this year, yeah, which would drive that up to about seventy eight thousand. Nothing really to do there, just other than to monitor what the fund balance is. And there may be opportunity for the park commission to look at other projects that you might have going on. Housing Commission Fund, only a fund balance of ten point two percent, but that's a good thing. This is a revolving fund, funds that are put into the community to help with repairs and bringing homes up to code. For the folks of lower income, very successful program. And then the Transit Fund. Net, net position at the end of fiscal year twenty twenty of five hundred sixteen thousand dollars. I don't suggest though that we do anything with the millages on this one, because those millages do generate additional federal and state dollars that come in. If we make reductions there, that means reduction in the state and federal matches that we receive too. And the operation, while that might seem like a lot, if you've gotta replace a bus, that's gonna go down in a big hurry. So it's a good adequate figure to have.
Tim, is that the same for the veterans as far as matching the state and federal?
Don't believe so. Now, they do get state and federal monies, but I don't think they're tied to the formula like what you see at Transit. And the last item, our last fund is five ninety. And the last item or last fund is five ninety-five, the Commissary Fund. I had a fund balance at the end of twenty at one hundred seventy-two thousand and it does appear to have a surplus this year of another hundred fifty-five. So what we've done with the budgets is recommended a transfer of two hundred thousand from here to the general fund. That offsets the costs again of operating the jail itself, and that's what those funds need to be used for. So that would also help to fund those two new positions that we need to add. Just a quick review of a few things that we need to do is the board that you will have a series of resolutions that you'll see. One of those is the Public Act one fifty-two resolution that we'll do annually. That's the one Missy have mentioned. We will have that in front of you that will say hard cap for this year. You do have to do that every year. So it's, it becomes routine at that point. You will also have a con, what I call the contract resolution. That's the one where we list there are certain contracts that we know we're going to see each year and rather than have to put them on your agenda for individual approval. We know we've got to do them. We'll list them all, list their costs and we can approve those en masse. There is programmed into the general fund and to the special funds, a two percent increase for all elected and non-union officials. So that's going to be part of the wage lines for each of those. Commissioner wages were set last year. You do that once a year, so you'll do it again next year and that will impact the board that's seated on January one of twenty-three. So right now I would strongly suggest that we do the budget meeting on September thirtieth. That will give you the extra week to look over the materials you're going to see. And again, there's no surprises in there, but you do need to be comfortable with it. Give you an opportunity also, if you have questions to call me, go over any specifics that you have. And one other reason to have a meeting on September thirtieth, we have four contracts that are going close or getting close to resolution. If we can, we'd like to get those all adopted before they they expire at the end of the year. And we are waiting till the eleventh hour, but the eleventh hour is still on time. So that would be two more items that hopefully we'll have on the agenda for the thirtieth. So that's the walkthrough.
Meeting on the thirtieth. We're not going to be voting on the thirtieth. Is that what you're asking?
It would be a special meeting called to adopt a budget. Twenty-two. Potentially, hopefully, we'll have a couple of contracts to ratify as well.
So is this open for discussion? Is that what you're looking for?
Yeah, I'm I'm true.
Can I share, Mr. Scott?
Well, I'm happy to read about the tax revolving fund. I've been talking with Tim relatively about this, but it's been a big concern. We talked three sixty-six. That three sixty-six number is basically the average growth of it and back a couple of terms that was mentioned, maybe we should make that a line. And I, revenue line item, automatic, and I didn't like that at all because once you start spending on a regular basis, you'd never get away from it. You depend on it. And that's what the whole tax revolving fund has been over the last so many years. It's always this, this, this savings account back there. Don't worry, we can blow as much money as we want. We all we got to do is tap into that. And if for the people over here a couple of years ago the past Maggie Robinson, the past treasurer and Bev Scott, past commissioner testified here that 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 whole fund was not set up to to be a crutch for the for the budget. It is like, like Tim said, it's it's capital improvements or one-time purchases or things of that matter. So I'm really happy to see that we're reducing our dependency on that. Couple of things I, you know, I was here when we put the soldier sailors millage on and there was there were some things about our, we had to, we had to do, we had to address that. I I'm not going to be in favor of cutting back on that, not this year at least. I myself, I'd go another, take a look at it in another year. I, all in all, this is, this is looking really good. I think, I think that we need to to get with a lot of our departments. I'm not, I was to try to make a lot of money, but there's some low hanging fruit out there that that some of these departments should be grabbing as far as revenue. And then we need to stay on top of spending. And gain a little in revenue, reduce a little bit in spending here and there. And and we can reduce that dependency on that tax revolving fund. We've been very generous in the negotiation then of it this year. A lot of these issues that not only the the department heads and elected officials had, but also employees are going to be answered. And the reasons why they can't do a lot of things are going to be answered. And so going forward, you know, something's got to pay for all that.
I am very happy to see that we're going to wean ourselves from the tax revolving fund. I mean, that's something that's been going on for ever and ever and ever. You know, it was always used as, it's like Craig said. It was looked at kind of as a slush fund. And I never wanted to see the county depend upon supplementing the general fund out of that revolving fund. And I know, you know, it's been a point of contention and I understand that certain times it needed to be done, but I'm so glad that Tim's formulated the plan, number one, to wean us from that. Hopefully in four years, we won't have to touch and die of that money. You know, obviously, we're, you know, we need to discuss the the road patrol millage, I think probably loving half a mils probably, I think it was Tim's recommendation. Probably very appropriate. Most definitely. You know, I mean, there needs to be a reduction in it. We have provided services to the people. You know, we don't need a huge fund balance in there. You know, if we keep loving the entire mils, so you know, cut it in half and see what happens with it.
Can you elaborate? You you made the statement probably not to, and maybe this is just
I said June.
You said June.
I said June.
Is there a reason?
I I'm just thinking out loud, I guess, when I said that. You know, they've got two in the academy now. With the new contracts that are
More appealing. They got two in the academy, but two two just resigned.
Hopefully. With the
Offers.
Yeah, I'm not trying to
They're they're voting, they're the deputies, the
And the commander are going to vote to ratify.
You're going to come back to us with that, correct? We're not talking about
No, but I'm saying hopefully, hopefully, if this settles the way that we think it's going to, there is going to be a very good incentive for them to be able to draw from a much larger pool because we're going to be able to be more competitive with other agencies.
Okay, I just wanted
So that's, that's where I'm coming from, say, once this happens and then they get through the hiring process and the FTO thing. That's why I threw, that's why I said that. I don't, I don't want there to be any false expectations of saying, you know, well, it's going to be and let's face it, none of us know what's going to happen. I'm just trying to be realistic in my mind. In my past experience to say, okay, this is where we're at today. Hopefully we'll be there a hundred percent by June. That's just, that's my thought. That's nobody else's. That's just Mark Serbrook thinking out loud.
Thank you, Commissioner.
And I guess I echo what Mark's saying there. I very much agree that the budget's looking really good this year compared to what I've seen over the last couple of years and I'm very, very happy what I'm seeing.
Any opinions on millages?
Like you said, the the road patrol, you know, from what I'm hearing out in the the public that, you know, we've not, nothing's happened over the last year or so. You know, I agree that that needs to be cut down. And and hopefully, again, like Mr. Serbrook said, hopefully by June or somewhere in that time period that we start with the with the unions and the negotiations, we 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 start getting some more manpower and and start straightening all this mess out.
Mr. Rebecca.
I agree at least a half a mil or half a mil on the road patrol. I'm not very optimistic at this point, though. Maybe we were promised that we're, we're going to be up and running by December or January or whatever it was. I I think we know that's not going to happen. Unless we can hire from from external sources with deputies that are already trained. I think it's going to be a while before we can get up to the number we need to go to twenty-four hour road patrol. I think there's maybe other ways to get us there with what we have right now, but that's just my opinion. I hope see some change there hopefully. And then, so we're not using the tax revolving fund, but we are pulling, did you say five hundred thousand? Out of that. So, so really, we're not
Any further ahead.
We're not further ahead. We're actually farther behind than we were last year or, yeah, last year.
We are using revolving fund money.
The idea right now for the past two years, and this is, they've made sure is they've lost revenue, if you will. That revenue is coming back gradually. So the thought and thinking is, I think, behind the ARPA formula is that by the time you exhaust that for years, your revenue is backward would be to replace that. And I think it will be, just looking at the projections, I think it will be. I don't know, obviously, what the next variant is going to be and what that could possibly do to us. But just on the trajectory we're on right now, I'm very comfortable saying we'll be, we'll be in good shape in the four years.
I hope you're right.
Me too.
It doesn't, it's not looking very good right now.
Well, this this year, at this time last year, we were talking a million dollars. Okay, that was the comment made.
I thought it was right around five hundred thousand.
Think we remember.
You remember the big number, huh?
I mean, I have some questions.
The one that's sticking in your head.
Did you have? Um, no, you're okay. My questions were related to a couple of millages. The the veterans with that fund balance is, are they able to do with a three hundred and three thousand dollars that's projected? Are there other things are able? I mean, I wish Jeff was here. Is there other things that that he can use that money for? I mean, obviously, that's not a millage I want to touch, but
Good conversation to have with Jeff. Remember this year, in particular, the last year or so, he was himself on leave for an extended period and he had a position that was not filled for a good part of the year. So there may be programs they weren't able to take advantage of because they just weren't available to do that, where they maybe need the funds to resume those programs in the future. So that'd be a very good conversation to have. And I'm sorry, he's not, he's usually on Zoom.
Those are dedicated funds and and, yeah, we all know that COVID kept a lot of veterans from going to his office. He wasn't even in his office for a long time.
I agree with all of that, but A fund balance of three hundred and three thousand, I mean, we need to figure out if if we do need to, if that can continue to grow, I I mean, we need to find out more information about that. And I'm going to disagree with you guys all a touch here. I I think the general public is is hurrying inflation through the roof. I don't foresee that getting better anytime soon. I I don't see this pandemic unfortunately ending anytime soon. So I think we're going to have to continue to do a lot of things that are are happening now. From me looking at these millages, the one I would want to to address, unfortunately, I I would like further conversation with Jeff about that. Obviously, that's not a village I I really would like to tou, to touch, but I would like his input on that. The MSU Extension is the other one. Because because of COVID, I I know they haven't been offering a lot of their services. Four H is is one and I'm just talking about the fair here and and that's another millage that that I I would be in favor of of decreasing slightly because I don't foresee what you said as far as our services growing in the near future. This pandemic is not going to be over in the near future, so I'm in favor of of cutting that one slightly. And then, of course, the road patrol. I'm going to be honest, I will never agree with a half a, half a mil on that one. I feel like we've collected monies for services that have not been provided. I do not want to continue to do that into next year. I understand we're working on that. But none of those services have been provided from my perspective this past year. So we collected monies that had had not been utilized and I am not in favor of that whatsoever. Hopefully, next year when we're sitting here, things will be better. But again, I I I think with us having, we can say we're in a better place, but we're still taking five hundred thousand dollars of monies to help get us there. So are we really? Am I wrong?
I think we are better, but I understand.
I I, that's my opinion, so.
Well.
Discussion.
I see what you're saying, but I think this has been a, I think this has been a a thing of contention. Listen, this this road patrol noise wasn't, it's road patrol. One component of it was twenty-four hours. One component, not the entirety. It's not, and so we have been using some of it.
Agreed, but that's what, that's what sold this millage, just like MSU, what sold the village was four H. In my perspective.
In your perspective. In your
And the people that I talked to.
They, and we gained a million dollars and they didn't get anything extra. They already had road patrol.
I I just
And I get, and I get what you're saying too, Jenny, but
The picture's bigger.
At the same time, I I don't know if we can go all the way, you know, to that, to that number you want to go with. So what happens if we do get back up there?
I would agree to point two five. Um, that that's my own half. I I if we if we could say we've done half of the services that that
We have done half the service.
We didn't do any more than half the services than we were
They've got a day shift. That's half of twenty-four hours.
We were already providing, we were already providing that service without those funds.
Through the general fund.
Ruined through.
This is not through the general fund now.
I I understand what you're saying, but
That was
We have to be the one to
That was part of what, that was part of what the whole millage was all about.
Absolutely.
According to the man that was seriously involved in crafting the language, from what I understand, it was
Made the initial, made the initial motion.
To fund the road patrol separate from the general fund.
Correct.
Right.
Yeah, right. But at the same time, I think based on what Tim's recommendations are, that's going to factor into the negotiations that we're working on as well. If if those, all those numbers increase, then we have to take that in consideration as well.
Next year at this time, we'll be talking about the same question. We're looking at the same millages.
And and I, and I'd hate to see us, quite frankly, let's say we go with your point two five. A year from now, we're sitting here and we take it up to point seven five. How's that going to go over? If we can leave it at the point five and have a
Who knows where we're going to be any year?
Oh, I, I don't disagree with you, but I mean, I think if they see, if they see this millage really fluctuating, any millage, you know, up, down, up, down. They're going to go, what are these, what are these five people doing, you know?
But we have to address where where the community is at a whole right now.
I'm not
Struggling.
Not disagreeing with you at all. Okay, I'm just, I'm trying to think of what's in even keel, the best for, you know, I I
Well, I think, you know, the thing was is we didn't, these, us five people did not pass that millage. We only put it on the ballot. It was the voters and the taxpayers, the voters, it was the voters that passed it. We only put it on the ballot. It was the voters and the taxpayers, the voters, it was the voters that passed it. Okay? And, and with whatever economy they were involved in, they passed it. So if, if it was a tough economy for them, they still voted and passed it. We didn't pass it. We can't do that. They have to vote and pass it.
They have something that has not been, money's been collected on a service that's not been provided.
I'm more, I'm more, because of what we, I've seen in negotiations and everything else, I'm more optimistic about bringing the staff level up faster. In that, in that case, then we'll need the funds to pay for it. You know, and I, I, that's why I'm at .5. One year, you know, if we come up to full, if we come up to full steam, then the next year and 23, we'll need the, the whole mill back again. Well, I, I think, I think, I think we have a fund balance now, it'll cover it. I would hope that we're, we're, we're up and going more like March, end of March, that gives us half the fiscal year rather than,
I am, I am too. I'm just trying to, I'm, I'm, I'm not trying to be overly optimistic, okay? I'm erring on the side of caution. Again, that was Mark Serber talking out loud.
And this is Craig Scott talking out loud. I just think with the, with the, with the, with the atmosphere and what, what we've, what we negotiated with and everything else. And that's Tony White, or, you know, that we're, we're going to be in a position to, to, to man up faster. Or not man up, but person up faster, isn't that what I,
That's what you meant.
Get the full staffing.
Full staffing.
There is to maybe lure some already trained experienced officers.
Absolutely. And what we've been doing is, should give us that avenue.
Well, I, I think prior, listening to the sheriff prior, he kind of went to that avenue, but just couldn't entice anybody with what we had at that point.
Well, and we weren't going to, we couldn't make any changes.
Right, right.
And, From what I understand, there was at least one individual that, again, if things pan out the way we all hoped they will, is ready to jump on board.
Yeah.
And that's only one department. We got another individual like that in another department. We were just talking with the department head about yesterday. If, if, if the department head knew that it'd be ratified this way, he didn't know, should I call this person and tell him? Well, you have to do wait till the ratification comes. But the offerings were made by us, and like Tim said, the, the union have turned down an offer we made.
Is there any other, or any other discussion, I guess?
Well, I mean, at this, at this point, next summer, you know, obviously, things don't get any better. We're not going to be able to really change anything next year other than to, to drop more village money out of it. And hopefully, once we get there, we'll be in a better position. But there won't be any negotiations next year, so hopefully this all fixes it.
What fixes what?
Negotiations gets us up to where we need to be.
Staffing wise.
Yeah.
Tim, I guess the question I got, what keeps us from voting on this next week instead of two weeks?
I'm assuming that you're not going to be ready. I mean, there's a lot of stuff I'm throwing at you here.
Yeah, I'm not ready to approve this.
Yeah, I got a lot of questions inside the line items as well.
Okay, because I've been reading them pretty much came out. Okay, I just wanted to know.
So this meeting that we need to set for the 30th, are you guys okay with an evening meeting?
I'd like it to be in the morning if we can.
I can't. The earliest it could be is, is, or I, I can't, I can't do a morning meeting.
The earliest you can do?
Six?
You mean go from 5:30 to six?
I can go from, you know, in the evening or, I'm sorry.
If, if it's in the evening.
Oh, I can do a five, I could do a five o'clock in the evening. I could be here by five. You can do six AM if you want.
That's 6 AM.
If you like.
I can, yeah, I can move it up to five.
It's five o'clock work?
5 PM?
PM?
Yes, 5 PM.
I could do 5 AM too, Greg, no problem.
Yeah, Greg could too.
Greg is in that other few five, than 5:30.
AM.
Actually looking at flying to Florida.
Are you flying to Florida?
I was,
You're going to miss budget adoption?
No, no, I'll, not, I'll not go.
Now, do we have to have a public? So can we do,
Are you leaving in the afternoon?
Yeah, it'd be in the evening.
A time period for that?
Well, this is a special meeting. I mean, do you want to move it a day earlier?
It doesn't have to be, yeah, it doesn't have to be on the 30th, it does.
I just picked, because it was a Thursday, and we usually meet Thursdays. That's the only magic there.
Does Wednesday work better for everybody?
Does me.
Yeah.
I don't care.
Yeah, that's fine.
Wednesday's fine with me.
It's obviously the 29th.
Wednesday evening, 5:30?
Or five? The office is five. 5 PM?
5 AM?
5 or 5:30 on Wednesday?
That's fine. I'll, I'll make that work. That's fine.
Five o'clock.
Five on Wednesday, the 29th.
So do we also want to have this on the meeting next week for discussion? See if anybody's got questions, see if, I think, I think we still need to talk about things.
I'd like to invite Jeff in particular to talk about veterans.
And Chris.
Chris, yeah.
Chris. Oh, he's already on there.
So he, You want him at next regular meeting, not the committee in the whole? Chris, Casey?
Might as well, because we only have one other item on the agenda.
Well, if it's just over his buying habits, I guess it can wait for it to leave the hole, right?
Well, he, he wants an increase in the, in the credit limit, so let him, let him make his, let him make his argument for the increase.
Pending that he needs to increase for, so.
So he purchased something?
Let him plead his case.
They can't, they can't send us a bill?
He's saying they won't. It's something to do with Honeywell with the repairs. They,
Yes, they can't send a bill.
So Tim, I guess for this budget, you've met, I, I guess maybe I, I missed something. Did you meet with all of the department heads in, in fine tooth comb, and, and did you give us a report on that?
I actually met with departments here this last Monday as well and discussed where it went. Most of their recommendations were in there. In fact, I had to answer a couple because they hadn't budgeted quite enough.
Didn't you initially put this out like in June?
Yeah, yeah, everybody's been engaged.
Since, for your,
I, I agree, but I guess I, had you given us updates and I, I, where, where everybody was, what? Did I miss it?
I don't think you missed anything, but you got on the, the Excel spreadsheets is the, you know, the finer details of the general fund. And like I said, I didn't have to do a great deal too, but it was a matter of updating, like when we had contracts ratified, updating the wage lines and the benefit lines.
Now that we all have, all of the department heads have access to the software, we can all see everything versus waiting for meetings to get printed reports like we used to have to do. Everybody can log in and see what Tim's done, and it's all live or,
Real time, yeah.
Real time happening.
Yeah.
It just seems like in the past, there's been a lot more discussion prior to, which this is great. I'm not saying that it's not, but, like, it just seems like there had been a lot of discussion, hang on. It seems like there had been a lot of discussion prior to this, so all of a sudden, this being thrown in front of us Monday and saying, you know, approving a $10 million budget just seemed fairly quick on my,
Right, those discussions still happen, but they're happening during work hours.
That's fair. That's what I'm, that's what I'm asking.
So there's, there's been, you know, I've had a lot of one-on-ones with people, and they go, what if we do this? And, you know, tweaking things for that. And I, animal control's a great example. When he's come in and we've talked about his workload and,
Agreed. That's just nice to hear that this conversation has occurred.
Oh, yeah. I mean, you're not,
On both ends.
On those deals, because I'm here, you're not hearing it. If I wasn't here, you didn't have an administrator, you'd be hearing it directly.
Which I'm glad you're there. That's not what I'm saying.
I understand.
Again.
Great tool in, in, in streamlining our process, Jenny. This software has been a huge, huge difference in the process.
Huge. You see where I'm coming from, right?
Yeah.
I gotta say, I, I've been hearing the same thing from the townships that are using the BSN.
It's huge.
It is. It's streamlining so many things, the way they operate.
Streamlining.
It's just,
Anything else?
No, no, I, I think the BSN has been, been great. I think it took some time for a lot of people to get used to it. But I think the only concern that, I think Jenny was trying to get, get across is that we didn't actually see it.
Monday.
Yeah.
I told you.
And it was a lot. It wasn't just a little. So that, that is, so that's why I just wanted your, anything else, guys?
Motion.
Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, my gosh, sir. It is public comment.
Read it again?
I have to, hang on. I don't, okay. So did you have something you wanted to add? Really?
Good.
Are you sure?
Well, I'm putting him on the spot.
Your name?
Mike Richmond.
Okay.
We paid our tax money then to have a knife. That's what you all were discussing. Well, Mark said it's a, trying to reach out of state or out of county to get people in. To get full staff and have a knife control. Because we had an incident down on H Street, well, there, West H Street, in Prescott, or Schindling. And they had a state patrol down there, four of them, for what was going on. And they finally found the person that they were looking for, but it shook a lot of people up. And they wanted to know why the state police were down there instead of the sheriff.
Has anybody reached out to the sheriff's department?
Pardon?
Did anybody reach out to the sheriff's department? Thank you, is that?
2911. But the sheriff wasn't here, and we paid our taxes, or I don't, but the people do for the road patrols and knife control.
Thank you. Thank you for your input. Thank you for coming. Can you spell your last name?
R I C H, I'm in.
Any other, any public comment on the phone? Any public comment on the phone?
You can ask.
Motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second that, it will be adjourned at 7:52.